Staff recognition, media specialists, secretaries.
We have Dr. Grofer coming up.
Good evening, President Thorpe, School Board Trustees and Dr. Maleko. Governor Whitmore, as Dr. Maleko just said, has proclaimed April as School Library Month. In Dearborn, we call our school libraries Media Centers in recognition of all the work they do in addition to being libraries. And we have four educators here with us tonight, and they represent the 14 media specialists and 19 media secretaries who serve Dearborn schools, students and teachers by making accessible, diverse, print and digital resources, teaching students the skills they need to access, evaluate and use information throughout their lives, and promoting a lifelong love of reading. I'm proud of the work that they do every day, and I'd like to introduce those that are here tonight. I'm going to ask them to come forward, just tell you what their role is and the schools that they represent. So I thought that we'd start with Margaret.
Margaret Ackerman, I'm at Henry Ford Elementary and Stout Middle School.
Next.
Cindy Alvarado, I am a media specialist at Solana Elementary.
Nicole.
Hi, I'm Nicole Allward. I am the librarian at Etzel Ford High School, Whitmore Bowles, and I'm also the district's library media resource teacher.
Heather.
I'm Heather Winter. I'm the media secretary at Lindbergh and Maples Elementary.
Hello, I'm Booth A. Nassad. I'm media secretary at William Ford Elementary and McDonald Elementary.
So thank you for all the work that you do to support our schools through our media centers and your work. Thank you.
We can also get a picture. Any trustees want to step in?
I have to get it stopped.
Yes.
Yes, we know.
And a bad thing to do.
I know, yeah. Yeah, I've been one all my life. That's going to shake down.
Next item, approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the following Board of Education meeting: Policy Committee meeting, March 13th, 2023, Board Report 22-102. Building and Site Committee meeting, March 13th, 2023, Board Reports 22-103. Regular P-12 meeting, March 13th, 2023, Board Report 22-104. Study session, March 21st, 2023, Board Report 22-105. City Relations Committee meeting, April 5th, 2023, Board Report 22-106. Recommended action: Make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion by Trustee Pelishkov, support by Trustee Barry. Any changes that are needed, Trustee Barry?
No changes. Question, Trustee Petrikov, you chair that committee?
Who chairs that committee? City Relations.
City Relations, I'm sorry. City Relations.
Right.
I believe Tom Wall was present at the last meeting?
Yes.
Okay, Tom, were you able to bring up, where is he still here? Did he bring up the discussion he wanted about bringing back city school events to open gyms?
Yeah, we did. I'll give it out in my report.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
We just had the, I was really kind of surprised the minutes were already completed because we just had the meeting a few days ago.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other corrections or items for the minutes? All right. Can I attach unanimous rule into the minutes? Any problem with that? Seeing none, please attach a unanimous rule. Next item.
Special reports: Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. Mr. Micah Salee and Zainab Sarini.
Good evening, Dr. Maleko, President Thorpe, Board Trustees. Thank you all very much for this opportunity today to discuss diversity, equity and inclusion here in Dearborn Public Schools. Really, this presentation today is going to talk to, take us a little bit about what we've been doing up to this point, prior years, this year, as well as what we're currently doing, and hopefully what the future holds for diversity, equity and inclusion, in addition to like a draft plan. Part of the draft plan, too, is we would love the feedback from some of our board members as well, if you have any questions, comments, or whatever it may be. Prior to the draft plan, a couple of things that we've been doing in the district is culture responsive teaching in addition to cultural proficiency training. Some of the culture responsive teaching training has been done from our EL department. The culture proficiency training is we brought in many, many different consultants, specialists to not only discuss this with some of our administrators at district admin meetings, but also some of our teachers as well. In addition, if you remember, a few years ago, prior pre-pandemic, Dr. Maleko made a concerted effort to start holding some of his general administrator meetings in different locations, including different religious institutions as well. Fast forward a bit, a couple of years now, about last school year, we started a small steering committee, which included both myself and Dr. Maleko and other central office administrators regarding diversity, equity and inclusion. And a few things came out of the steering committee. First and foremost was we decided to enroll probably about, right now, 17 to 18 leaders within our district, teachers, administrators, central office administrators into different trainings. One of the trainings was through the Mesa, Michigan Administrators of Superintendent Association, which was, it's almost an 18-month-year training. It's very, very intense. We meet almost monthly. We discuss a variety of different topics regarding equity and how we can do things different in our district and just to betterment, both from a macro and a micro level. In addition to that, we also sent various administrators, both central office, building-wide administrators and district staff, support staff, teachers, to receive diversity certification training. Right now, kind of what our goal is, is to kind of put all this together and develop a solid plan moving forward for our district. And that's where I get to introduce our great new DEI coordinator, our Diversity, Equity and Inclusion coordinator, Ms. Zainab Sarini, who's going to talk to you a little bit about what we're currently doing, but also a draft diversity, equity and inclusion plan moving forward.
Good evening, everyone. Can you all hear me? Okay, great. So we, like Mike said, have been drafting a diversity, equity and inclusion plan that's really rooted in the mission and vision that you all see on the screen. So thinking about how Dearborn Public Schools is an inclusive space for all of our students, staff, community members, and really how we're equipping all of us to create and sustain those environments for our students, our staff and our community members. So, so far, we've been working on a draft, and we've organized it into three focus areas. And we'll talk a little bit more about each focus area in just a second. But the idea here is to organize the draft plan, if you will, so that we can have some big-picture goals, but then also go through and really think about actionable steps that we can take in order to meet those goals. So that first focus area is thinking about systems of equity. So this is more at a macro level, what systems, policies, procedures are at play in schools, in the district, and are we looking at them from an equity perspective? So one example here that we've been thinking about is student code of conduct. So next time, the student code of conduct is up for review, ensuring that we're thinking about some of the tools that we've gained in the training, that a lot of us have went through around DEI, but looking at that from an equity lens and ensuring that all of the policies and disciplinary policies in the student code of conduct, for example, are equitable and inclusive for our students. The second big focus area is thinking about programming, school culture, community partnerships. So really looking at a school level, what sorts of things are happening in order to build community among students, staff and community members, outside of that, of course. So thinking about how we're equipping teachers, staff members, to really build an inclusive learning community and sustain it. So some examples of things that are already happening are the student advisory groups that, I know, Dr. Maleko, you have one. A lot of our executive director has, executive directors, excuse me, have one as well. But that as an opportunity to just learn more from students, how they're experiencing school, and then, of course, empowering them with tools and resources. So a lot of them, I think all of them actually do projects every year to create more inclusive spaces in their buildings, create more spaces that are better suited for their learning and for their development. Also, things like handbooks and resources. So what are some things that we can provide to teachers to support them in creating and sustaining these environments that really foster a sense of belonging with our students inside the classroom, but also in co-curricular activities as well? And then our last focus area is really looking at staff training and coaching. So, you know, our goal is to create an inclusive environment for everyone. What types of things might we need as staff to make sure that we have the tools to kind of create and sustain those environments? So some examples that have already actually been happening, so the Dearborn Public Schools Equity Series, so that's a series of six workshops? Yes, six workshops that's happened, that are happening now and wrapping up in five of our schools that we're planning to expand next year to additional schools. There are some examples of, excuse me, workshop topics up on the screen, but we've done things around Middle Eastern culture, supporting students with disabilities, supporting students living in poverty, things like Diversity, Equity and Inclusion 101, if you will, so looking at implicit bias, micro-macro aggressions. We are wrapping up visiting middle schools to talk about addressing the use of racial slurs in buildings, and then recently did a new training with the Dearborn Teacher University new staff members on diversity, equity and inclusion in the classroom.
I'll just wrap up talking about our next steps and what the future holds. Obviously, to continue to revise our plan, continue to improve upon it, and obviously, hopefully, once we get approval, to start implementing the plan. In addition to that, we'd like to expand our equity series that Zainab spoke about to all district staff. Right now, we're targeting a few schools. Hopefully, you know, as the years progress, that we can start targeting more and more schools with some of that. And I think, obviously, Ms. Fathmi Faraj is going to lead the way in the renewal of a district strategic plan, so hopefully having some of this, the DEI plan embedded into that strategic plan as well, and a DEI handbook, hopefully. With that said, will, any feedback, comments, questions?
Any questions from the board?
So you said that you're using a couple, or you're implementing this in a couple of school buildings. Are the principals also doing this training as well, or is it just lead teachers?
Yeah, no, it's the entire staff in the buildings. Yeah.
Was that it?
All administrators did receive the training prior as well.
Okay.
All of the administrators in Dr. Maleko's general admin meetings.
Trustee Moses?
Yeah, so will, at one point, teachers be required to take this, or is this right now on a, can they also elect, since you're only targeting a few?
Yeah. So considering it was kind of the rollout year, what we ended up doing this year was, we tried to target a couple of schools, but we also took volunteers. So I believe we have about seven or eight schools that our series is being right now run in. In addition to that, though, we've had building principals reach out to us, saying that they wanted a specific piece of the equity series because they were seeing whatever issues may be arising within their building, and we've accommodated for that as well. But ultimately, our goal is to ensure that all 37 schools do receive this training. The issue is we have limited trainers in so many schools, so we really have to kind of do it on a tiered approach, tiered level.
And for the handbooks, is that available right now?
It's available in draft form, but obviously, we want to take it through the committee process. We would like you guys all to review it as well before we adopt it in the district.
Trustee Pelishkov?
Are we going to have some kind of survey to ensure that this is actually working the way we are anticipating it to work? I know that over the years, you know, we pilot a lot of things, and not everything actually is as successful as we would like it to be. And one of the issues when, when we're talking about this, because this is so, this is all about human nature, and, and, and human beings have a, you talked about implicit biases. I mean, everybody has things that they, that they don't recognize necessarily, they're making judgment calls on, but it can really alter the climate of a building if you have somebody acting upon it and/or somebody perceiving it that it might not necessarily be what they're really experiencing, but their perception of it is real as well. So I'd like to make sure that we have, that this comes with some kind of a tool for us to understand whether we're hitting all the marks and whether we're making a difference.
Yeah, absolutely. So for the equity series that we're speaking about, we collect information at the end of every workshop in the form of an exit ticket, but we're also doing a cumulative survey for how staff experience all of the workshops that will go out once they complete that last workshop as a part of the series. So we can use that to determine any changes that need to be made for next year. Anytime we do go in a school and do staff training outside of the equity series, there's always a short evaluation survey that we do at the end of that, that we're able to collect a little bit of information from people, see whether or not the training session that we did is working, how it might be able to be tweaked, and how we can move forward.
Out of my own curiosity, Superintendent Maleko, in the future, and I mean, this is way down the road, after we get this well situated in all of our buildings, is it possible we could be incorporating it as part of an evaluation of the building, so to speak? If we have a way to ensure that our buildings are healthy in, in their performance in some fashion or another, I'm just thinking outside of the box of how we can ensure that we don't drop the ball down the way and everybody kind of gets comfortable and goes back to past performance over time?
Yeah, and I think the, you know, with the plan getting linked into our strategic plan, which would get approved, this will keep it moving forward. As you know, with our, we always are referencing.
An emphasis on it.
So this would be, it's its own plan within the strategic plan. And I would just say, too, like MASA Superintendent Association has been taking the lead on a lot of this, and that's where we're doing the two-year series. And then at my conferences, there's multiple sessions that have been provided for, both from educators and attorneys as well. And I just attended at the National School Board Conference, my pre-conference session was on supporting LGBTQ plus students. And so Dr. Swedan attended that with me, so we had some very good information there. So we, we recognize that we need a plan to get to everywhere, and that's kind of what this year was, and Ms. Brown has been fantastic to work with. And so we have a lot of things going, trying to unify it. But yeah, that's a good point. We can put that on.
Yeah. Yeah, so a lot of the training that we've actually gone through talks about assessment tools and like audits, if you will, that are used to assess.
That's what, an audit is a good.
Absolutely. So we've started to look at some of the tools that are out there and how we might be able to adapt them. A lot of them are like self-assessment. Some of them are building-wide assessment. Of course, like you mentioned, that would be, you know, years down the line, once a lot of this stuff is up and running. But yeah, that's included in our plan right now.
Thank you.
Just as a practical example, we just discussed, some of the edits that we're making with the student dress code had to do with looking at what the equity series was recommending. And Ms. Sarini looked at it before it went to the, we just discussed it in the policy committee, so.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Next item.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action were assigned in by 7:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the board's secretary, may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. There's a three, three-minute time limit on comments made to the board. Linda Lilly from Ibsolanti would like to come to, as an employee, would like to come to speak to the board about recognition of staff.
Good evening. Again, my name is Linda Lilly. This is my 18th year as an employee of Dearborn Public Schools. I've worked for 17 years as an occupational therapist in the district. However, this year, I transitioned into a new role as a preschool autism coach. While I'm still an active member within the OT department mentoring new OTs in the district and doing committee work to help strengthen OT service guidelines for our special education students. So I come here tonight as a month of April is very close to my heart. First, it's the month of the young child. It's Autism Awareness or Acceptance Month, and it's also OT Month. So to me, it's basically the big trifecta month with having all three of these areas of my professional interest intersecting. I come here tonight to recognize all the amazing staff that work with our preschool programs, including the developmental preschools, Great Start Readiness Program, or the GSRP, Early Childhood Special Education, or the ECSE classrooms, Autism Preschool, Pol High Preschool, CI, SXI programs. Second, I want to recognize all the preschool through high school staff of our autism center-based programs, resource rooms and teachers across the district that accept children with autism into their general education classrooms and love and support them like all the other children in their classrooms. From the teachers, the paraprofessionals, social workers, speech-language pathologists, the OTs and PTs, it truly takes a village to provide the best education and support services for all the young children and students with autism. Lastly, I want to recognize the 15 full-time occupational therapists that service the special education students across the district. It's not a job with a faint at heart. From preschool to high school, from center-based classrooms to students who are fully included in the general education classrooms, from students with a very large range of abilities and special education eligibilities, from direct services to consult, to working with teachers through MTSS, from working in multiple buildings and having caseloads that sometimes seem overwhelming, from IEPs evaluations and wraparound meetings, it's a tough job. But Dearborn has some of the very best OTs. I'm proud to be a part of the OT family. Thank you for all the staff who work so hard, day in and day out, to service our education students. I'm proud to call myself an OT, a part of the district-wide autism team, and to be a part of Dearborn Public Schools. On a side note, to show your support for Autism Awareness or Acceptance Month, I invite you to come out to Whitmore Bowles for autism, for Walk for Autism on Friday, April 28th, from 2:45 to 3:30. Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise Tomlinson, employee from Huntington Woods, would like to come to speak to the board about the POHI program.
Good evening. I'm Denise Tomlinson. I'm the teacher consultant for the POHI program and assistive technology in the district. POHI is the acronym for physically and otherwise health impaired. I just wanted to give a shout out to the teaching and ancillary staff that work with our center-based programs throughout the district at Cotter, Nowland, Stout and Etzel Ford, and also those who provide support and services to the 70 outreach students that we have in almost every building in the district. And then I also wanted to specifically give thanks and appreciation to the entire special education team at Stout for their exceptional and significant support that they have given to the POHI students this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, a parent, Rosa Jasso from Dearborn, would like to come to speak to the board about autism awareness.
Hello, my name is Rosa Jasso. Thank you for listening. I have two kids with special needs autism, non-verbal. So I had a bad experience. On March 16th, I go pick up my, I'm not getting real details because I know I only have a short amount of time, but I did pick up my daughter from school, and what I witnessed was unbelievable. She was being held down in her chair by a pro-professional and screaming at her, holding her down and screaming at her face like a drill sergeant at my daughter. It was unbelievable, me witnessing this. After, I've been also making complaints, witnessing, noticing bruises on my daughter, handprints on my daughter, and every time they say, I'm sorry. When I noticed the bruises, I reported. Each time, the investigation said there was no restraints being used, but the leader kept coming home with bruises. And also on that day, I also, the para-pro also came at me, and I just asked her, please do not do this to my daughter, because special ed department also assured me this is not happening at time and time. This is since fall, and this has been happening. And I'm sad. This is like, and then also how she behaved with me and my daughter. We, I fear, my daughter has not been to school back yet because I feel for her, her life. I don't know what's going on. What, I really, this investigation, I still haven't heard anything about it, what's going on? What are they going to do about it? You know, it's hard, that, bad enough that you have to trust these people when your kids are non-verbal. I just want to know what's going on. I don't feel comfortable, and I don't feel safe for my daughter to go to school here. And and I noticed this, there was another incident that happened this year, a child being restrained and properly restrained inside the district. What would it take? What's going to take for you guys to take care of our children that are non-verbal? They come to school to be safe and educated. We should not fear for our lives or for our children's lives taking them to school. It's not always been like this. I don't know what's going on, but I'm just saying what's going on just recently. And me coming forward, telling over and over to the special ed department about these bruises, and they come up with nothing. That's very scary, you know, because who's going to stick up for these children? Who? Nobody. So what, I demand, what, what the board's going to make the district do about something, something about this? What's going to happen? What's going to happen? I want to know what's going to happen. What are they going to do about it to make sure our kids are safe? Is it going to take a class action lawsuit against the district? I demand that the board does something about it. And
I also would like, if they could put cameras in these classrooms with these non-verbal children, they deserve somebody to walk over them.
The three minutes is up, but we will, no, that's fine. We will make sure to start getting answers for you tonight.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Next, Crystal Jean would like to speak to the board about student success.
How many times do I have to come up here after a mother speaks of a special needs student? You all know that my son's autistic, and I didn't give him to the special needs department for that reason. We're again proving Crystal right once again. I worked with the special needs director. I personally gave him one of the best things that any parent could have gave him, and that is with an ABA center in Dearborn, with the proper therapist, their proper training. Why didn't happen? I don't know. Why is that? What, what's it going to take for a child to die? A non-verbal child? We had the harness incident. That incident, the incident at Whitmore? Can go on and on and on. You guys really need to get your head out of your asses, literally, before a child dies. For that rant is over. What is going on with the sex ed? What is the update? Because we voted last month in all the four different committees that you guys put in before I went to the school board. The presentation was supposed to be tonight, so what's going on? If you think that you're going to stonewall me and I'm just going to go away because my son's graduating, I started something, and I'm sure not how I'm going to finish it. So whatever you think by stonewalling me, not going away, I, if I have to stand on the corner and pass out curriculums, hey, I'll buy myself a printer and a freaking lifetime of paper. So you guys need to figure out something because this, every single meeting is the same thing over and over again. No changes, but we get awards.
Thank you.
Next, Stephanie Butler would like to come to speak to the board about student success.
So I also wanted to touch base on the sex ed, just because
So I also wanted to touch base on the sex ed, just because from what I'm hearing and consulting with attorneys about the law, the law is like the Sex Advisory Board, which was created. We did our job from us. It is supposed to go directly to you for a vote. Instead, Dearborn has decided to stop here, stop here, stop here, stop here, all along from the time it leaves us to the time it goes to you. Inappropriate, improper, our whole job, the role of the Sex Advisory Board is to meet, make decisions, not that it goes to all these other committees for their input once we're done. We've, we've decided it needs to be presented to the board, and I don't think it should be bypassed. I think we should follow the law. We're out of compliance anyway. I'm just going to stop on that. I just, I've heard so much, my head is spinning, and I wanted to touch base on a few things. All we ever talk about here is diversity, equity, and inclusion, okay? Do you think things are getting better in Dearborn or progressively worse? I don't hear anything about math tutoring, reading programs, trainings. It's all diversity, equity, inclusion, what? Do you see what's hap, all these kids are being left behind, or special needs kids are being abused? Our kids are not reading. Those kids that you tracked, that I watched on the way, what have we done from then till now? Nothing, they're still in the same position. You know, and then you guys sit here, and I don't even know if, how much research this board does about the items that are brought forward. For example, they talked about Eureka Math. I'm just going to read a little statement from the Eureka Math, and I, I just want to know if, what does any of this have to do with math? Two plus two equals four, period. I don't care how you go about it. But we're going to talk about Eureka Math. It offers opportunities for students to explore themselves and their families and see positive representation of themselves through the material. People represent diversity, problems with exercises relate to real-life experiences, perspective, people from various cultures, ethnicities, and gender identities. What the hell does gender have to do with math? The kids can't even do math, they cannot read. You guys have to, I mean, you guys are like asleep at the wheel. Honest to God, you're asleep at the wheel. Something's got to give around here, you guys, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Next, board follow-up.
Uh, so I wrote a few things down, kind of taking them in order. There was a mention of a walk at Whitmore Bowls on Friday, the 28th, but I could not write quick enough what time.
2:45.
2:45. 2:45 to 3:30. And is that on the track, kind of behind at the park? Thank you. All right. Dr. Maliko, if you want to mention the mother that was talking about autism, I know that Mr. Martin went back and spoke with her.
Yeah, so obviously, student safety is top priority, no matter what, with all of our students. And so any, if they're, you know, we want to make sure students are safe, so we will thoroughly investigate any things that have occurred, and I think in some cases, investigations have been ongoing, so we'll make sure the board's informed, and we'll make sure that we're protecting our students through the HR department, through our executive directors as well.
A couple of comments about the Sex Ed Advisory Board. I know you had mentioned to me that that's something that needs to come to the board for a presentation.
Yeah, we had discussed, and we were tentatively looking next month, bringing it to the board. And we've been in contact with our legal counsel for everything that we need to do.
All right, so as an action, not an action item, but a presentation in May?
Yes, that's what we were looking at. We weren't ready for it as a presentation, but the recommendations, we sent the memo to the board, they're going to go to the board just as they were, you know, sent to me from Mr. Hummel, which I then forwarded to the board.
Okay. Trustee Barry.
Just a follow-up on the Dr. Maliko, the recommendation from the, from the committee's coming straight to us, or?
It will come to you, and I can't remember all the details because we're working on it, Dr. Groover, and I believe with Mr. Hummel, but we've been in contact to make sure that we're following everything that we're supposed to do.
It's got to go through legal, I understand, that's a good thing. But, I mean, do you see any changes? Because from what I understand, it was voted on at the committee level?
Yeah, so Mr. Hummel put together the memo, and everything that he, that came from the committee is in that memo that, you know, came out of that committee that I, you know, we didn't take action yet, obviously, at a phone meeting, but it's upcoming.
So the next month, there'll be a report, then the following month, maybe we take action?
Mason, you knew, we have to present, she has more of the detail of what's required. I'm going to ask her to come up.
It's on the agenda for next month's board meeting, and yes, the committee will, the recommendations will be presented to the board. There is a complete memo ready, but we knew that the committee was going to present the information directly to the board, and it's on the May agenda.
So on the May agenda for a presentation to us, and then at the June meeting for a vote?
The plan was to have it on the agenda for a vote as well in May.
Okay.
The law requires two public meetings, and we already had discussion about it at one meeting, so then the May meeting will have the presentation and the vote, it'll be an agenda item for a vote.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Palachov.
Under board follow-up, did we want to do anything about, at the last board meeting, we had a lot of conversation about the conditions at Lori and some of the stuffs we've taken, and also, we, we had a staff member who was concerned about Alice training and safety protocols, and I know that, I'm not sure, but can we follow up with that too, of what we, we were told after that conversation?
So at Lori, I can just tell you that Mr. Rosinski went, as the board's aware, the very next day to look at some of the concerns that were brought up. They were addressed by the team. I then set up a meeting over there, I think about a week late, or several days later, I can't remember exactly the date. Mr. Wall was out there, Mr. Andrews, I had Al Lirini, the principal, we had a big group, and we did a walkthrough. A lot of the work was scheduled to be done during spring break, was already in the schedule, and then I think additional work was added when we identified some items there. So we're going to have a follow-up meeting over at Lori. I had scheduled for early May with the coordination with the principal, and the principal was happy with, you know, that we came out and are looking at all these items. There's some things that were in the works already from Mr. Wall, as we're dealing with aging infrastructure across the district, as I know the fielding's going to come up. There, there were some steps that he was taking on, some positions that he's been working on to try to take care of not only Lori but other buildings as we're dealing with the aging infrastructure, but, you know, the water testing, the air testing, all that, we had Ms. Elzadiat out there as well, so more, more to come, but I, I do know that there was a lot of work that was completed over the spring break as well. And that's prime time to get things done, you know, as you're planning when the students are out. As far as the Alice training, we're waiting on our crisis team meeting tomorrow, and then there will be a memo going out to all district employees that we have drafted, and we're just waiting to kind of finalize, a last, finalize that our crisis meeting tomorrow, our crisis team meeting, that's just our regular monthly meeting. Wanted to make sure everyone's on board because everyone's name on the committee is on that letter. So you will see the plan being unveiled. You'll be, there'll be recognition for what has already been done relative to Alice, and then there'll also be, you know, timelines as to what will happen, both, you know, things that are happening at the general administrators meeting to things that are going to be happening across the district with the fact that we now have our SROs and multiple people that are trained with Ms. Elzadiat, with Chief Shaheeni, he allowed us to go, so we have multiple train the trainers now that could go in physically and provide support. But once we do the video training, we're really, we're also working with the building principals and their teams, and we're going to have a session in May at the general administrators meeting, where myself and Ms. Elzadiat and Mr. Martin will be presenting on, you know, working with your building teams and how you can actually start during your drills to implement a lot of the strategies that are out there. So along with the trainers coming, we're, we're doing a lot at the administration, and the board, obviously, will get a copy of that memo as well.
Okay, thank you.
I think, Trustee Barry, you had to make sure that we get it out to everyone, that's what we're doing, so.
Any additional follow-up, Trustee Mosep?
Yeah, thank you for the report on the water testing. However, I see it as just being, telling us if there was water testing done at the school, but I'd like to know furthermore if, if there were modifications, if there were things that were found in the water, were those at satisfactory level per the EPA as far as the water in the schools, especially at Lori?
Okay.
So for a request for information, that, that would be what you put forward?
Correct, yeah, but it's, we, we asked for that information last time, and we received it, so I'm just following.
For a follow-up?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything additional from the board? All right, next item?
Next item, action items. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
I had questions on two items, but they did not need to be pulled. Any other action items that would need to be pulled?
I have a question on the bus contract, or the bus purchase contract, I think it's 12, is it? But it doesn't need to be pulled. No, it's not.
Yeah, yes.
Uh, 10. It's 10.
Yeah, it's not 12.
And I'm sorry, I didn't state that I've got comments and questions on numbers two and eight.
So two, eight, and 10 have questions, but they don't need to be pulled.
Any other action items? All right, if you can go forward with the
Motion.
The motion?
All right, well, I don't need to pull two, eight, and 10 correct.
No.
No.
So that action items number one through 19 be approved, as recommended in this agenda.
Support?
Tie goes to the runner, I'm going to give it to
I always give.
It'll, it'll, the motion was made by Trustee McDonald and supported by Trustee Barry. Kind of going through the, the different items. On number two, it's more of a comment, but this goes to the new security system that we've been implementing in the district. And my item with this is that we are now working on change orders three and four. That's a lot of change orders for one action item. I would, I would ask that if we can do a better job as a district to have an idea of what's it going to take and not keep coming back, and we need a little bit more, we need a little bit more, we need a little bit more. That's all I had for number two. For number eight, that is regarding a new turf field at Dearborn High. My question is, do we have the ability to reuse some portion of that existing turf field somewhere else? Because I can't say that the, I would be hard-pressed to believe that the whole thing is past its useful life. Can we take portions of it, cut it up, and put it someplace else in the district where they could use that type of surface?
That question was brought to us. Mr. Wall could come up and speak a little bit more in depth, but our insurance provider, they didn't like the idea. He breached that with them first because they worry about being able to resecure it without it being a safety hazard. I, I can't take credit for this. Mr. Musten came up with another good idea, that we could possibly cut up some of it and sell it as like a fundraiser for the boosters, athletic boosters, so we thought that was another good idea. So we're going to look into this a little bit more, and we'll, we'll breach further ideas and talk about that together, and find out if we can find a repurpose of it in some capacity.
Is the idea that this is being replaced over the summer? I'm just trying to look really quick.
Correct, that's going to be done the summer before the fall sports start in August.
So we'd have a little bit of time to figure out if we could
Correct.
reuse it in some way, shape, or form.
So since it's Mr. Musten's idea, does the money go to a booster club, or does it come to?
We, it would go to the booster club at the school, yeah, but you guys have the power to change that.
Don't get me in trouble.
That was, that was all that I had on that item. I'm just, I didn't think about it in time for the other two schools, but those whole surfaces can't be bad, and there's other places in the district where, whether it's cement, blacktop, or something else, like, I think that would look better.
Well, I do know that in the past, when we had playground equipment that we were changing out, and we had asked a question many board roles ago, there was a liability issue because of, of moving it, and then the integrity of the product can be damaged, and we don't want to put ourselves in a situation where we move it, put it down someplace else, and then we have some injury or harm done because it, it was compromised by the removal and movement of it. So I, I do understand what you're saying, because we, we tried that with a bunch of other playground items over the years of trying to reuse them someplace else, and there, there was a liability issue then.
Thanks. Trustee Mosep, what was your questions on item 10?
Well, I, I know our fleet is 100% Bluebird, and we're kind of highly dependent on it, but looking at the pricing for the bus, comparing it with 2019, to currently, it's a huge jump in the price. If I can recall, the previous purchase that we made for two buses was 357,000, which did include one wheelchair lift transit bus, and currently, we're buying another two, but the amount is 364,000.
Did you say the previous amount was 352?
Actually, previous amount in 2019. Yeah, and those were four buses, sorry. So four buses, 357, and we're buying right now currently only two buses, 364, so it's almost double the price.
I, I don't have that information in front of me today. It did go up significantly, and we did talk about that, but when we do the MSBO purchasing, or, you know, the, I'm sorry, the pricing for our buses that uses Hoekstra and Bluebird, those are the two buses in our region for the type of transit-style buses, and even the Hoekstra went up significantly over the last few years since COVID, so it was noticeable, we agree. A lot of that has to do, again, just with, you know, the shortage of materials. They've also put a lot more to, what's happening is the diesel industry is trying to put a lot more improvements on the exhaust systems, they get them up to standards to compete with electric vehicle, or electric buses, so a lot of these increases are coming through that. So there's a lot, there's a lot into the question, but we did, we did acknowledge that, and we noticed it as well.
So is there an opportunity to have this as a bid, even for other fleets?
So the way that the school bus industry works is they do it by region. So Bluebird and Hoekstra, they don't allow us to shop around the different suppliers, you have one for the region.
So we
So essentially, if we put this out on a bid for the market, we would get the same two dealers that are only able through the manufacturer to allow to provide us prices.
Trustee Mosep, any additional questions on that?
Oh, no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. All right, so we've got a motion by Trustee McDonald, support by Trustee Barry to move forward with action items one through 19. Could we please have a roll call on that?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Ambrosio? Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mosep?
Yes.
Trustee Petchikoff?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thorpe?
Yes.
Summary of agenda, action items. Number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of change orders. Number three, approval of an award to Quaver Ed, Inc. Number four, approval of an award to curriculum associates per board report 22 hyphen 109. Number five, approval of an award to Wayne Risa per board report 22 hyphen 110. Number six, approval of an award to Great Minds per board report 22 hyphen 111. Number seven, approval of an award to Crabtree Publishing per board report 22 112. Number eight, approval of an award to S&amp;H Trucking, Excavating, and Shaw Sports Turf per board report 22 hyphen 113. Number nine, approval of an award to Desmia LLC per board report 22 hyphen 114. Number 10, approval of an award to Holland Bus Company. Number 11, approval of an award to Great Lakes Environmental, Inc. per board report 22 hyphen 115. Number 12, approval of an award to Secure Education Consultants. Number 13, approval of an award to Foresight Design. Number 14, approval of an award to Nichols Paper and Supply Company. Number 15 to 17, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P12. Number 15 to 17, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P-12. Number 18, approval of financial statement, and number 19, approval of donations.
Thank you very much.